Put great strains on the city's budget. Your tax base, your property tax base fell by 35 percent from its peak in 2008 down to 2013. You've been growing back, but you're still about 11 percent short of where you were in 2008. So that you all were very good stewards of the money. You had to make some very hard decisions and the strategies of deferring capital projects and maintenance, selectively cutting staff positions and holding pay pretty steady helped you get through this financial crisis. And you're still seeing some of the impacts of that in terms of, you know, pay scales that don't match those in competitive communities or comparable communities. You've taken action as a city council last July to try to remedy some of those pay disparities. So that will be useful. There's still a backlog of unfunded capital projects as you've caught up with some of the deferred maintenance that you had to defer earlier. And what it means is that it is a tight budget. You don't really have a lot of flex there to add new facilities, to add new parks, and to take on new operating costs because you are constrained. We are a little concerned about the lack of balance. Forty-five percent of your budget comes from ad valorem property taxes. That's not unusual relative to other communities because you tend to keep your -- the difference would be whether it's in the tax rate or it's in a service fee. So that's not so unusual. What's different is that almost 90 percent of your taxes come from residential property. And that means that most of the burden is on the residential taxpayer. You don't have the big commercial projects that pay much higher rates or on higher values. It also means that you have some particular constraints related to the legislative environment in which you operate. So the Save Our Homes Constitutional Amendment means that your property value as an individual homeowner can't be assessed for more than -- cannot increase by more than the inflation rate or 3 percent, whatever is lower. So that means even though the property values have recovered, the assessed values haven't recovered. You lost a lot on your value of your house. It came back over four or five years, but your assessment may not have come back to where it used to be. And that's why we see we're still 11 percent lower than where we were in 2008. For most communities, it's the growth in new development that helps them and commercial development, which is not similarly constrained on the assessment policies, that help balance that out, that help the city stay financially strong in spite of those constraints from the legislature. But you're constrained in your ability to do that. And what it's meant is that one of the really concerning pieces is this level of fiscal reserves in your budget. So the Government Financial Officers Association suggests that a city should have about two months' worth of operating funds in reserve for natural disasters, you know, another hurricane, for an economic downturn, or unexpected projects that are not in your budget. You need to be able to respond to emergencies and to unforeseen circumstances. Right now, the city's reserves are a little under 8 percent as opposed to 16.7 percent that a two-month reserve would suggest. To give you some reference, Ormond Beach is at 15 percent in their reserves and Tarpon Springs is at 20 percent in their reserves. So it's -- the city has a long-term goal to increase its reserves by half a point a year. It's still going to take a while to get to the 16.7 percent that is a sound financial goal for the city. But that, again, that just makes you vulnerable to long-term shifts in the economy. So our next piece was to prepare a fiscal model so that as we go forward and we test different concepts in the plan next week, we can understand what that means for the budget. So for the operating budget from the general fund, when we take all the development I outlined before, the office, retail, housing development over the next 10 years, that would increase your general fund operating budget by 1.7 to 2.9 million. So that's 8 to 14 percent increase as a result of the new construction. On the capital side, it's a little smaller. Your five cent and six cents gas tax plus the local option sales tax are a little more limited, but that development would still generate $86,000 to $161,000 a year in new funding for capital improvements. This excludes the Water Sewer Utilities Fund because that is set up as an enterprise fund that's self-funding. So it's designed to be self-sustaining and not included in these numbers. But I wanted to illustrate a couple of the concerns and the things that will affect what we're planning in the fiscal planning efforts next week. One of those is the concept of opposing new development, particularly opposing commercial development and what that means financially for the city. So from that full development program, if we were to say -- so on the high end, that gave us $2.9 million in new operating revenues for the general fund. If we were to say we don't like commercial development, we don't want to see that new office and retail development, we want to just stay a residential community, that would drop to $2.6 million. But if we were to say we really don't like density, we really don't like multifamily and condominium development, and we only want to see new single-family development, then the increase would be only 1.6 percent. So that's 45 percent less than a full mix of development over the next 10 years. As we look for what that means for how much of the taxes depend on the residential tax base, currently it's 88.7 percent of the tax base is residential in nature. With the full development that we talked about, it's still not going to move the needle very much on that. We'd be at 89.2 percent in 2030 with full development. If we went residential only, though, the residents would be beholden to support 97 percent of the expenditures. So you'd become even more, really extremely dependent on residential tax base, and the same if you went with only single-family development. So then, just to expand on that, as we look on a per-acre basis, the development of the remaining land that you have available, if we do just single-family detached houses at about four per acre, that gives the city about $8,600 a year in annual revenues to the general fund. If we do a suburban-style kind of multifamily housing, that with surface parking, that's much higher density than single families but less than the optimal, that would give you about $20,000 in annual revenue per acre. And if we go to condominiums, which have higher value per unit, that same kind of surface parking strategy would give us 20, almost $27,000 per acre. So really major differences, you know, three times as much under the condominium development than what you receive from a single-family development on an acre. With some more examples, on attached units, we did a fairly conservative eight units per acre for sort of like patio homes. That would give you about $6,300 per acre. If you were to do more like 12 units an acre for something more like townhouses, that would really be over about $9,000. Structured parking for a multifamily development at like four stories would give you $42,000 per acre. So again, compared to less than $9,000 for the single-family units. And the condominiums with structured parking, again, because they have a greater value per unit, would be almost $54,000 per acre. So really, very distinct and major decisions are implied as you go forward and make choices among what kind of development, what density of development you'll allow in the future. So one last example was specifically looking at the city marketplace. So this is just an example. It's not designed yet. We will have multiple designs during the charrette and chances to work through all of those questions. But just to give you some idea of what's at stake in that development, from what we call a four-floor area ratio, which says for every foot of ground, we can build four feet of building. So that would give you about a five or a six-story building on the site. We could accommodate in total about 25,000 square feet of retail, which would about mirror what's on the south side of West Marion Avenue. Then we have 20,000 square feet of office space that could be accommodated. And on top of that, we would have room for 200 apartments and 300 condominiums along with structured parking to accommodate all of those uses. Again, very much just a back of the envelope, here's the sense of scale of what is possible on that site and what it would mean financially. And in this case, that one development would create new revenues to the city on the order of $570,000 a year for the operating fund and about $30,000 a year for the capital improvement funds. So our next step is to take this model and apply it to annexation areas. That's the other way that the city can grow and can increase its general fund, increase the tax bases to annex new areas, particularly areas that have commercial development already or have opportunities for commercial development. So we'll be going through each of the annexation areas that the city has identified as possible and testing what does it mean for the city's budget to do those annexations. So that will be part of our focus next week as we move forward. So just to sum up in terms of what I take away from this analysis relative to the planning effort, is that a better balance and diversity within the city of the tax base, the population, the housing stock will make you more sustainable, will help you become more better balanced in terms of the people who live here can also -- or who work here can also live here kind of concern. You need to grow the downtown to keep it healthy and competitive. It's really the festivals and the events that are keeping those businesses going. They're very seasonal, and if they don't make their money in three months, they're out of business. And so that's a key concern. So to the extent that we can grow the year-round population, particularly the downtown population where people can walk to the restaurants, walk to the stores, that will be very important for that business base going forward. I think you should plan for a full range of new housing types, so not just the waterfront and the single-family houses, the condominiums, but also some small multifamily. So something on, you know, with four multifamily units in a building that looks like a house. There are a lot of options that we can be exploring, and we'll look at some of those during the planning effort. And then finally, if we emphasize mixed-use infill development in walkable communities that are well-connected to the business amenities, to the waterfront, and to the rest of the community, that will really serve you well in long-term sustainability of the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Captain, I'm Mr. Carey.
Always have, please.
Yes.
Okay, so when you talk about commercial development, are you including industrial and transportation development opportunities also in that?
Most of the industrial and transportation opportunities are outside of the city limits.
Okay, I would beg to differ with you a little bit. If you look at the city limits based on our service area and annexable, because we do go all the way out to the airport, and there is an industrial park there. And keep in mind that the city is bringing on 4 million gallons of water right now with the capacity to expand it for another 4 million gallons, or total 8 million gallon capacity expansion. And this body here has already taken proactive measures to hire a consulting firm for the potential for future waste treatment and sewer. So proactively, we have that. And those are high-level sustainable jobs that aren't so -- based on what you're saying some of our -- and they are part of the annex.
Right.
I would implore you to take that, please, into consideration.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, our next stage is to focus specifically on those annexation areas, and that will be a part of what we test.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Absolutely.
Because in your presentation, I wasn't gathering that that was really part of it. If you look at our service area, it's much different.
We will certainly consider those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn, did you have something?
I just want to say one thing. I was very disappointed in the initial presentation that was given to us in our city council package for today.
Yes, I apologize.
And it would have been extremely helpful to have a 70-page document last Friday with the rest of the council package. I didn't have time to read it. I'll be very honest, I read part of it. I didn't have time. In 36 hours, 16 of which were sleeping hours, 36 hours, I had a lot of other things to do yesterday. I did not have time to read this document. And it's not fair to the council members who are supposed to be voting and approving things that we don't have the information on a timely basis. The initial document, to me, was useless. I could have written that on the back of a cocktail napkin at a bar. And I'm being very serious. I want to see more productivity on the part of Dover Call if we're going to move forward with this project. Otherwise, let's pull the plug now and not waste over a quarter of a million dollars on it. I really am disappointed in what I've seen so far. That's all I can say.
All right. Let me just offer that we will be here all next week, and I will be very happy to answer any questions, to sit down with any of you who would like to go through it in more detail. And if there are questions that you'd like us to answer specifically in terms of the modeling, I'd be happy to do that as well. But I apologize for the late delivery of the report.
Other comments?
I would agree that the late delivery, that was, when I first read it, it was like, you know, where is everything else? And I had a lot on my calendar yesterday because I'm getting ready to go out of town for a few days, but I did stop and put other things aside and did go through it, and there was a lot of valuable information in there. And I know that Dover Call comes highly recommended by, when I was at the Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting, and mentioned that you all were doing the master plan for us. Other cities said, ah, great firm. So I have confidence that you will deliver, but just knowing that we're looking for more detail, so.
I would also add that attention to detail is important. On the first page of your executive summary, you call us portagunda.
Oh, dear.
So it's attention to detail that matters to me.
Yes.
Yep.
Other comments?
I guess on a lighter note, I was in Tallahassee-Thomasville this last weekend. I saw like the effect of the Dover Call in the community. They really just rehistoricalized and really just shot some really good energy into them. It's a very successful, how do you say, rebirth of their town. It was done very well. So I feel confident that we have the right team.
Well, I'm looking forward to next week, and I know that many people in our community are as well, so.
And we hope to see you all.
Yes, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to be here with us today. Thanks. Okay, move on. Recommendations from city officers, city manager? Nothing. Okay, city attorney?
Brief update on the Plattner Woodwork Dodge litigation. We've submitted the pleadings to the court. We are still in the comment period where, you know, we've got to put notice to the world if anybody has any claim or defense regarding our forfeiture of this property. That deadline is March 19th. Soon as that is completed, we can then move forward with the court proceedings.
Okay. Well, thank you for keeping us up to date because residents are asking us about what's going on there.
Understood, understood. And also, on a different note, thank you for your action on my contract today. It remains an extreme pleasure and privilege to represent this city. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Regarding the Plattner, I'd just like to ask that we not spend more money if we can't recover it in the proceeds. Regarding on how many liens there may be on the property.
I'm sorry, that's something that we are very sensitive to, so.
Yes.
Whatever comes out of the woodwork will then be able to present to you.
I have full faith and confidence in you. You're welcome.
Okay. All right. City clerk, we have a big item on the agenda.
Yes, indeed. We have received applications for the pickleball committee from citizens in each of the city council districts. And with that, I'd like to distribute a couple forms.
Thank you.
Here's a list of the applicants.
Thank you.
And here's a list, the voting sheet for District 1.
For everybody's benefit out there, we are going, the council is going to select each district first, and then after that, they will select the at-large.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Okay. Thank you.
We're going to do each district first. That won't be hard.
At the back, here's the form for the representative from District 2.
The appointee for District 3 is Julie Moriarty.
For District 4 and 5, can we nominate and appoint as we do a normal process?
I'd as well be with your request at this time.
Okay.
I nominate and appoint Beth Magnan for District 4. Do them one at a time, right?
I think one at a time would be good.
Yeah.
There's been a nomination, a motion and a second to nominate Beth Magnan for District 4. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I nominate and appoint Bill Hughes for District 5. Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate Bill Hughes for District 5. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. So we have the five.
All right, and here's the voting form for the at-large members.
They're voting for 2, is that correct?
Yes.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yes.
Originally, we said one person from each district and two pickleballers. We already have two pickleballers, so now what do we do? We're doing not by district or pickleball now, correct?
We met the requirement, correct me if I'm wrong. We have met our goal of having two pickleball players.
And each district.
And each district. So now at-large, we, it's really up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Peterman. So we now have to vote for the second at-large member.
Do you have more sheets for us?
No, we will need to redistribute those and add an additional mark. Actually, we do have some blank sheets over here.
Hold on just a moment. Let me make sure, let me make sure.
We've been through this before.
No, no.
We have hanging chads here or something?
There was one more, there was one more that I did not count, so.
Ah. While he's doing that, the vote that everybody was talking about this morning, it is now been officially declared derelict by Fish and Wildlife, so the process to deal with it can go quicker. So they're on it.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. That's great.
All right, so now we have a tie of three. Donna Peterman, Rick Sarkasian, and Darcy Hall. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you back your forms, and you'll circle the one person that you would like to be the member at-large to break the tie.
But Donna's the one.
Circle the name.
Well, we only circled one name.
No. We've already had one person selected.
But you just said she was part of the tie.
You just said she was part of the tie.
Is Donna definitely selected?
Well, wait a minute. You're so. So, again, circle the name that you are voting for.
Two names, this is for.
Yes, the two names. Sorry. Who's this? That's me. That's her. Okay. Is this Jaha? Is that your, is that your signature?
Yes.
Okay, you, you, you only voted for, you only cer, you didn't circle any, so please circle the names.
Circle.
Two, two names.
Well, what if it's only one name?
Two, no, we...
If you're voting for both seats, I mean, you just did one at a time.
No, there was a three-way tie, you have to vote for two people.
You have to vote for two people.
Okay, we have a winner. We have two winners. Darcy Hall and Donna Peterman. Thank you.
Okay. Got that done. All right, thank you. Congratulations to all of those who have been appointed to the Pickleball Committee. We look forward to your participation and good luck.
See you in ninety days.
Thank you for your service.
Literally.
And dedication. And we met all that, you know, all the criteria, so, great. Okay, we still have some more boards and committees.
Yes, under vacancies, we have an unexpired term for an alternate seat on the code enforcement board. And then, under nominations, we have an unexpired term for an alternate on the building board. There is one eligible applicant. If you would like to nominate and appoint at this time, you may do so.
I move to nominate and approve.
And appoint.
Yeah, and appoint.
Okay, there's been a motion to nominate and appoint, do we have a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate and appoint.
Mr. Bothwell.
Yes. Mr. Bothwell to the building board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and then, we do have an unexpired term for an alternate seat on the board of zoning appeals. We have one eligible applicant for that as well, if you would like to nominate and appoint at this time.
Nominate and appoint Mrs. Mueller.
A second.
There's been a, a motion and a second to nominate Mrs. Mueller to the board of zoning appeals as an alternate. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and then, we do have an unexpired term for an alternate seat on the board of zoning appeals. We have one eligible applicant for that as well, if you would like to nominate and appoint at this time.
Nominate and appoint Mrs. Mueller.
A second.
There's been a, a motion and a second to nominate Mrs. Mueller to the board of zoning appeals as an alternate. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and then, we do have an unexpired term for an alternate seat on the board of zoning appeals. We have one eligible applicant for that as well, if you would like to nominate and appoint at this time.
Nominate and appoint Mrs. Mueller.
A second.
There's been a, a motion and a second to nominate Mrs. Mueller to the board of zoning appeals as an alternate. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Policy and legislation, last, last week, Lynn, Debbie and I attended the legislative lunch that Senator Ben Aquisto had. There were a lot of legislators there, including the Senate President, Bill Galvano, and then that afternoon, as well as our own Senator Ben Albritton, and that afternoon, then we had a meeting with Senator Albritton. It was a, a great meeting, a great discussion with him. He's a very open person, absolutely willing to, you know, wants to, good communicator. So, it was a, a pleasure. I'm also getting, Rachel has been forwarding information from, that she's getting from the League of Cities as far as conference calls, and, and added me to the list. I can forward that if anybody, there's, there's Monday morning conference calls, if anybody wants to participate in those. Do you want me to forward these to you, so you can join in if you want to? Okay. I'll forward those, and it, it's your call as to whether you have time or not to participate as they discuss legislation. And, that's all I have. And, so, council member comments. Debbie?
Well, sometimes we get to talk about our pet projects, and I would just like to remind everybody that on March 12th, we will, as a country, be celebrating the one-hundred-and-seventh anniversary of the founding of Girl Scouts. And this is something that, as a mom and a grandma, I have four troops, my daughter has three, we have a silver scout in our, which is sort of like the equivalent of an Eagle Scout if you're a boy. And at this current time, sixty percent of the women in Congress are Girl Scout alum, and I think that that is a big plus. I think that says a lot for the work that all the millions of volunteers have done to direct our girls to be strong leaders in our community. So, just know that on March 12th, happy birthday, Girl Scouts.
Thank you. Gary?
It was last Sunday, I had the privilege of being the emcee at the Taste of Punta Gorda. I also got to introduce our, our mayor, who learned how to partake in forty different vendors without getting ill, and I congratulate her on that.
I was really full.
She was, she was one of the, the judges for the, the best culinary delectables that we have at the, offer in Punta Gorda. I'd just like to say, on behalf of the Rotary Club, it was a wonderful event. Last year, they had approximately two thousand attendees, this year, the gate was thirty-seven-fifty.
Wow.
Far beyond it. There was a rumor that we were able to, to squelch, that we were running out of beer. Fortunately, our vendor was able to do an emergency route, and we did not run out of beer. The boogeymen were absolutely fantastic. Put it on your calendars for March first next year, they're coming back. So, that's all I had to say.
I had, I had a lot of fun, and the two actual chef judges that participated with me were, were wonderful, and their experience was, was great. So, we had a good time doing that, and, boy, the place was just busy all day. I mean, it was just very, very busy.
It was packed.
Yep. Lynn?
Two quick things. I have a pet project as well. Many people know I'm on the Board of Directors for the Military Heritage Museum. On March 29th at eleven a.m., we're gonna be having an event called Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans. Anyone who's served in the military in, in Vietnam is welcome to attend, actually, anybody's really welcome to attend, it's open to the public, but it will be honoring the Vietnam veterans. And I've been asked by the Board of Directors if, if the council would consider writing a letter of support for the museum over the course of the next couple of years. There's gonna be many times when they're gonna need to solicit financial support from different entities, and they're looking for some letters of support from various governmental entities and other communities that, that will provide some backup assistance for just giving a good word in, on their behalf.
Is that something that we can have Councilmember Matthews, or Vice Mayor Matthews, work with McHale and drawing something up that we could then approve?
Generic letter?
Is everybody okay with doing that?
Okay, sorry, is everybody okay with that?
Do we want a generic letter, or do we want to do a more public proclamation, or how do we want to?
Well, I, however, the best way to do it. I'd like to do that in the month of April, when we get ready for the grand opening. We're talking about, April 15 is gonna be the week that we are planning on doing this, this opening. We're gonna have a ribbon cutting. It's unofficial yet, but, because we're still working out the logistics of all the timing, but I'd, I'd like to do it maybe the week before, maybe at the first meeting in April, once we firm up the opening date.
However, it's best from my perspective.
You want to do both? You know, work with McHale?
Sure.
For just a generic letter of support and then a proclamation?
Sure. That'd be, that'd be great.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And thank you to Fisherman's Village. We just took possession of the building a week ago, and it, things are just moving ahead, full steam ahead, and they've already started moving some of the display stuff and the office facilities and everything, so it's, it's really getting exciting, and I'm really, really looking forward to a world-class museum being there. So, thank you all for your support.
You're welcome.
This last week, I had a Leadership Florida trip, and our group ended up meeting with the heads of, the Secretary of Agriculture, Secretary of State, Juvenile Justice, Child Family Services, Justice Luck from Supreme Court, the Leadership of our Florida Chamber, the Tax Watch, Bridges of the Poverty, and then Tall Pines, where we got to see why our forests have to burn every two years. So, it was cool.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. I also say, this Saturday, I, I'll be presenting the proclamation at the, the Archway Institutes, a golf and tennis fundraiser over at Twin House Country Club. The work they do is, is just amazing, and it's, it's incredible when you don't, you really don't know the number of families that are struggling with people who have drug situations, and I just, I have a friend who lost his son over the weekend, and so it's just, it's touching, so. Okay, well, now it's time for citizen comments. You have, please come to the podium, you have three minutes, and you can talk about anything that's on your mind.
I'm Bradford Gamblin, President of Punta Gorda Rotary, and I am pleased to be here to thank the city and the city council, and the wonderful place in which we live, for providing Flashley Park, where we had our Taste of Punta Gorda this last weekend. And as Gary alluded to, we have raised a tremendous amount of money compared to previous years. We've had a very successful park, we had our party, Taste of Punta Gorda, we had thirty restaurants, thirty-seven hundred and fifty guests, perhaps more, and we ran out of beer, we ran out of ice, we ran out of cups, but we managed somehow to make it all work. And Gary was there working, as, as were fifty-four, fifty-one members of our club, and, plus their wives and children, and fifty young students from Charlotte High School, who are a part of our Rotary Act program that we sponsor there. So, I, the, all these proceeds will be going back, not all, but most will be going back to the community, some go in the form of a exchange student program. We have an outbound, inbound student to the high school this year, here in Punta Gorda, and we continue with scholarships every year for I don't know how many years. Our club has been in existence since nineteen twenty-three, so we're not too far away from a hundred-year celebration in the Punta Gorda area. I just wish to thank everyone that participated, but I especially wish to thank the city and the, the people of our city who did participate and help us be able to do things that we do, and thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sheri Eleanor, I'm speaking on behalf of Smart Growth Punta Gorda. Last night, the city graciously allowed Mitchell Austin to come before the group of citizens at the PBIC. She spoke to seventy students, residents about form-based codes. It was very well received, there were extremely intelligent questions asked, which he very thoroughly answered. If you are not familiar with form-based codes, we at Smart Growth suggest that you Google the term, because we think that this is part of the future of Punta Gorda. This is how we're going to manage growth in our community, while at the same time maintaining our small-town charm. Thank you again.
Thank you for the wildlife thing you were doing. Punta Gorda, a few years back, you lost a baby eagle downtown.
State your name.
Kevin O'Shea.
Thank you.
Few years back, you lost a baby eagle in the town park. I golf on the golf course we have, and I watch all the birds. My problem is, I'm gonna do a roadside risk of pose the greatest risk of secondary poison for wild animals, dogs and that include, and one of them listed is Romaredon alone. I called, all around the areas, I've called Washington, they told me to come see you people. Pesticides being put out in boxes. I live right by the firehouse on Deborah Drive. There's a lake there, they, they took across the street in the nature park, they have a cartridge, things that kills rats, it doesn't use any secondary poisoning. At the end of Aquiesta, you got two eagle nests right now, according to the wildlife thing, and you got one over in Alligator Creek. At the end of condominium complex on the end of Aquiesta, they're using the same thing, the boxes. Our, our place, we're on the lake, right there, on the, across the street from, right across the street from the, from the park. They have over twenty boxes of poison, we have rabbits everywhere. We're down, there're like two big rabbits left, I called the place down here on Key West, she said that will kill rabbits, it will kill everything. It's a secondary poison, it kills a rat, it will kill a wrenchy, it'll kill a bird. I called the government, I didn't get nowhere with them, wildlife, I got nowhere with them. I personally watched four turkey vultures protected, fifteen thousand dollar fine, six months in prison, eating one of the rabbits. Four turkey vultures right there. There's, they tell me there's nothing you can do, that homeowners and pesticide companies can put as much poison as they want. Like I said, we have over twenty boxes, and then our place also put up purple martini houses. I'm just afraid that the eagles and the raptor birds are, they're gonna be done, they're gonna be eating the squirrels, the rats, everything, and you're not gonna stop the rats. There's a proven fact, the hornout will eat more rats and natural predators. San Francisco's banned it, San Francisco, Tampa's banned them. Sanibel had a big problem with them. I don't know what to do. I mean, I've seen these boxes going up everywhere now, I just don't know where it's gonna stop. I don't think there's gonna be an eagle or raptor bird left down the road, and I, your wildlife thing is, they're crying. I mean, I talked to them, I went to the concert the other day, I went down there, talked to them twice. I don't, I don't have an answer. You keep putting the boxes out. I know Sweden, a lot of places, Hawaii, they're using the A-two-four cartridge. But them losing the A-two-four cartridge does work, it, rat goes up, gets it, gets killed, something eats it, it's fine. Maybe it's something we should look into, the town should look into.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you have great nature parks, so, thank you.
Sheila Jaeger, I live on Red Esplanade.
Councilmembers, thanks once again for this opportunity to speak.
Could you please speak up? I'm really sorry, I can't hear you.
Sheila Jaeger, I live on Red Esplanade. Councilmembers, thank you once again for an opportunity to speak. At the last meeting, the council faced a number of players, all making a virtual, virtue of necessity, coming out in favor of noise abatement fencing. I feel the need to explain by using the council members' own words, where the notion of putting this abatement fencing in the park came from, in Gilchrist Park. First, came from Councilwoman Wine during the January second discussion. This is a direct quote, none of this is in the written record of the meeting, this is from the video recording where I went in and transcribed directly, and it's at minute twenty-seven. Here's my reason, this is the quote, here's my reasoning for it. "It will probably look, be looking pretty obnoxious, and will force us to keep our eye on the long-term solution to make this right, instead of letting it fall by the wayside, as in the original conversation that Nancy and I and the council had when we talked about noise abatement three years ago, three years ago." Then Councilwoman Wine mentioned the pickleball courts and pits in Balder, Colorado, and I can only say for me, that was an image that retains a certain charm, despite our water table problem. Then, slightly before the four options were put to a motion and approved, Mayor Pracke said at minute thirty-four, "The question I have for Jaha is, is this solution, which we all agree is a temporary solution?" And again, at minute thirty-seven, she reiterated, "We agree that it's a temporary solution, but it's a step in the right direction." Now, the, the point I'm making is that all of these are on the video recording. I'm just afraid that the eagles and the raptor birds are, they're gonna be done. They're gonna be eating squirrels, the rats, everything, and you're not gonna stop the rats. There's a proven fact, the horned owl will eat more rats than natural predators. San Francisco's banned it, San Francisco, Tampa's banned them. San Diego had a big problem with them. I don't know what to do, I mean, I've seen these boxes going up everywhere now. I just don't know where it's gonna stop. I don't think there's gonna be an eagle or raptor bird left down the road. And I, your wildlife thing is, they're crying, I mean, I talked to them. I went to the concert the other day, I went down there, talked to them twice. I don't, I don't have an answer. You keep putting the boxes out. I know Sweden, a lot of places, Hawaii, they're using the A2-4 cartridge. But them losing the A2-4 cartridge does work, it rat goes up, gets it, gets killed, something eats it, it's fine. Maybe it's something they should look into, the town should look into.
Thank you very much.
I mean, you have great nature parks, so, thank you.
Sheila Yeager, I live on Red Esplanade. Council members, thanks once again for this opportunity to speak.
Please speak up, I'm really sorry, I can't hear you.
Sheila Yeager, I live on Red Esplanade. Council members, thank you once again for an opportunity to speak. At the last meeting, the council faced a number of players, all making a virtual, virtue of necessity, coming out in favor of noise-abatement fencing. I feel the need to explain by using the council members' own words where the notion of putting this abatement fencing in the park came from, in Gilchrist Park. First, came from Councilwoman Wine during the January 2nd discussion. This is a direct quote, none of this is in the written record of the meeting. This is from the video recording where I went in and transcribed directly. And it's at minute 27. Here's my reason, this is the quote, here's my reasoning for it. "It will probably be looking pretty obnoxious and will force us to keep our eye on the long-term solution to make this right, instead of letting it fall by the wayside, as in the original conversation that Nancy and I in the council had when we talked about noise-abatement three years ago, three years ago." Then Councilwoman Wine mentioned the pickleball courts and pits in Baldur, Colorado, and I can only say for me, that was an image that retains a certain charm, despite our water table problem. Then, slightly before, the four options were put to a motion and approved. Mayor Prathke said at minute 34, "The question I have for Jaha is, is this solution, which we all agree is a temporary solution?" And again, at minute 37, she reiterated, "We agree that it's a temporary solution, but it's a step in the right direction." Now, the point I'm making is that all of these are on the video recording, but none of this is in the written minutes for the meeting that were approved. So it looks like these things were all approved, but nowhere does it say this was before the voting presented as temporary solutions, okay? And what I worry about, what I'm getting hints of already, is that the expense and appearance of this fencing in our Purdy Park and the increasing costs of kicking this down the road will be blamed on us, on the neighborhood, to our detriment, to the further delay of a permanent resolution. My neighbors don't deserve any of this laid at their doors. They don't deserve any further delay. There will be 16 permanent courts available soon at Pickleplex and 90 additional courts elsewhere in the county. The Pickleball Committee is going to come back with their findings, but then the city has to somehow find the money to buy land to build more courts elsewhere, if the committee can even find an acceptable location. That's going to take months or even years. Meanwhile, the pickleball players have made it plain that they have no intention at any time of vacating Gilchrist Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Bob Tally, I live down in BSI. I just want to thank you for your work, we really appreciate it, my wife and I, the fact that we're able to go to these charrettes. And I've lived in places where that just doesn't happen. You know, and we're very happy with the job you're doing, I don't envy you at all. God bless you, you're doing it, I'm not doing it. And we're looking forward to Monday. The main reason I came here, I wanted to make sure that Peace River Wildlife Center was taken care of. We thank you.
All right, have a good day, keep up your good work.
Thank you.
Don Sabatini, I just wanted to say that I don't know how you guys are able to work effectively with the sunshine laws. I ran many teams and worked in our departments for 30 years in corporate America, and there's no way I could've got my job done if I couldn't talk to other department heads. So what I want to ask you to do is to be patient in these city council meetings. Take as long as it takes, if we're here till 3 o'clock, please take that time, because it's well worth our time as citizens to have you guys put the effort in here, because I know realistically, you can't really do what you'd like to do outside of this council with sunshine laws in your way. So thanks again for all your hard work.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Hi, Pat Niles, Gateway Point. As it was just mentioned by the other gentleman, really sincerely thank you. And a little hope here with pickle, with the pickle board. Remember last year, what you all went through, what we all went through with Gilchrist Park and the Guitar Army? Well, I went over there, and I'm gonna keep going back, and you know, the place is packed. You have all of these musicians, all under a large circle, all the way around. It's not a tiny bit now we're showing up, it's large. All the people are bringing their places to sit again. There's no parking on the grass, there is parking that are in the side streets. So through all of this process, we are muddling our way through to things that actually work. So, you know, keep going. I do have some things that I'm gonna be paying attention to, to try to understand better. I'm trying to understand how Punta Gorda, we've talked about getting higher, and issues that people might have with height, building heights, and I'm also watching about the annexation. What does that mean, we're gonna be in so many years, where are we going? The other thing is living downtown, when you talk of living downtown, and how that affects something like, say, a restaurant. And that a restaurant owner, I think their idea is to try to have 100% capacity year-round. Well, what's gonna happen when the tourists come and the snowbirds come back? Are we all gonna be in long lines, holding those things like they do in Sarasota? They, don't put it in your pocket, because they have vibrators. They vibrate, they blare lights, they make sounds to tell you that your table's ready. So I'm just trying to understand that perspective of what the business community, the restaurant owner is looking for, when they want 100% year-round. The other last thing has to do with affordable housing. I was taken aback last night. Upstairs, I found out that one of our renters up in my building, at the Gateway Point, built in the 70s, $3,000 to rent a month. And I'm just trying to understand, when you do this affordable housing in condos, what is going to stop someone to buy a condo, like they do at Gateway Point, built back in the 70s, and then instead of renting there to do, go to work here, rents it for 3,000 a month? So I'm just suggesting we pay attention to that, and what does it mean by affordable housing, and how do we guarantee it for our workforce?
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned.
Good job.
Thanks.